If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Amberson. I'm Pastor Grace Church here in Allen Park. Let's pray. Jesus, we thank you for this evening and what is going to happen this evening. We thank you for the service of Fire Chief Ed Can. We pray that you pour out your blessings in his life and his retirement. We just pray a blessing over their marriage. We pray for Tammy and Ed as they enter into this new phase of life. And Lord, we also lift up the new Fire Chief Jeff O'Reilly. We pray that you pour out your blessings in his life and in his leadership as he takes over the fire department. We give you thanks and we ask all these blessings in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Michael, if you'll take the roll call, please.
All right. Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Blevins.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
And Pro Tem Lally.
Here.
And Mayor Gail McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. Any changes or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting of September the 12th?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any questions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion is carried. Now we will have the swearing in of our Fire Chief Jeffrey O'Reilly.
I have his old graphic.
It's on his desk.
There'll be a slight pause in the action.
All right. First of all, and I never do this, but it's an honor because the first time I ever met Chief O'Reilly, I think we weren't even eight, nine years old and Cabrini Grade School playground. So, very proud of you, Jeff. It's an honor to be doing this. Raise your right hand and at the end say, "I do," "I swear," "I affirm," whatever you're most comfortable with. Do you, Jeff O'Reilly, do soundly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of Fire Chief to the best of your ability? So help you, God.
I will.
All right. Congratulations. And thank you, Mrs. O'Reilly, because she's my four-year-old daughter teacher.
Before we move on to our next item of business, I'm going to let the council members make any comments regarding our new Fire Chief. Can I just keep it in the order that we're going to have closing? So we'll start with Mr. Marcos.
Well, welcome, Jeff. Great to have you. We've been here a long time and you've stepped into some big shoes, but I know you'll fill them well. Congratulations and welcome back into your new job. It's all exciting. So congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Lally.
I know, Chief, you did a heck of a job before when you got hired here. I know you'll do a better job this time because I know you will. Congratulations to you and your family being you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lloyd.
I feel like I got a lot to say. I first met Jeff when the kid with the mustache was like a toddler, about two or three years old. So it's been a long time knowing not Jeff, but his entire family. And they're all amazing kids. And I had a personal experience. I was coaching wrestling. I had a wrestler that had a full-on seizure, went backwards, hit their head, bleeding out the back. I am panicked. I'm trying to keep the blood from coming out and he's panicking. I'm panicking. I'm trying to keep call from the kids. Jeff O'Reilly shows up, calm as can be, goes like, "Hey, what's going on?" And took over the situation, put everybody in there at ease. And it's that calm, that commitment to his job. I know that he's going to do an amazing job leading this department to continue the direction that Chief Can has put us on. And I'm just incredibly happy to have you as Chief. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Mr. Valerius.
Congratulations. I first met Chief O'Reilly when I went to his house to have him build a little playscape for my son. And I was like, "Oh, wow, you're an Allen Park firefighter." And lo and behold, now he's the chief of our department. I just wanted to share a prayer, not only for you, your family, but for all the firefighters. Mighty and everlasting God, you send your servants for every occasion in your abundant love for humans. You have provided selfless civil servants who helped uphold and maintain your created order. Among these, firefighters are among the most valiant and brave. They are a wonderful gift you have provided for society. Bless these heroes and keep them safe in their noble vocation, that they may exhibit your sacrificial love day in and day out and go home safely to their families. Amen. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Schleck.
Chief, got to know you after the last couple of years. And you've helped me answer some questions, a lot of questions I've had. And I've seen your dedications, your family and your cheerleading camp that you have done. So I know you're going to do an amazing job as you continue forward. And I have found a little quote from Pat O'Reilly, so I, Pat Rally. So I figured from one Pat Rally to O'Reilly would be fitting. Being ready isn't enough. You have to be prepared for promotion or any other significant change. With that, I think you'll definitely be ready to fill these steps as you've done in your career so far. And I know you're going to continue doing so. So congratulations to you and your whole family. And you should have poked them with a pin, but other than that, good job. Thank you so much for serving. Continue serving.
Mr. Blevins.
Chief, congrats. You've done a fantastic job over the years. And I know many years coming, you're going to keep on doing fantastic job. And thank you for the service you do every day. Thank you.
As usual, I'm left with very little to say, except I'm very pleased to be sitting here able to do this. It's an honor and a privilege. It's wonderful watching people grow in their positions. Had the opportunity to interview you twice now for different positions and really get to know the individual and the man. And again, very honored to be sitting here able to do this. Thank you very much. And we look forward to your tenure as the police, as the Fire Chief. I assume you're going to stay around for the resolution approval, so we will now move on. Just to make sure it's official, right? Got to have a sense of humor, right? The next order of business is one for, that will bring pleasure to the individual. And we are very happy about this, but we are also very sad in a way. And that is the proclamation for Chief Ed Can. Recognizing 18 years with the city of Allen Park, Edward Can, whereas Edward Can is retiring as Fire Chief after 18 years of service to the city of Allen Park, and whereas he began his career as a firefighter paramedic with the city on September 26, 2005, was promoted to engineer on October 16, 2011, to sergeant on October 16, 2014, and to deputy chief fire marshal on January 12, 2015. And whereas he graduated from the School of Fire Staff and Command in 2020, was appointed Fire Chief on July 7, 2021, and has fostered new programs and secured grants for the benefit and well-being of the community. And whereas he received a unit citation on July 2, 2011, for being part of a team that stopped blood loss and saved a life, received a unit citation on August 16, 2011, for being part of a team that delivered a baby boy in a vehicle on Southfield Freeway, received a life-saving award on December 10, 2013, for actions taken on an individual in full cardiac arrest, and received numerous awards for fire investigation. And whereas his contributions to the well-being of the city of Allen Park and those he served have been many and varied over the years, including providing musical entertainment at the Fire Department open house events, now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Gail McLeod, on behalf of the city of Allen Park and all of its elected officials, hereby recognize retiring Fire Chief Edward Can for his outstanding services and express our deepest appreciation for his dedication and commitment to the betterment of our community, and extend to Ed and his family our best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement. And may the waters always be calm as he sails through retirement. And witness whereof I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan be affixed this 26th day of September, 2023. Congratulations. I will also give the council an opportunity to make some comments at this point. But before we do that, I'm going to read something I had contacted former Chief Doug LaFond to see if he had any comments that he wanted to pass on. And I'll just kind of read you the email he sent. He began with, "He was doing great and hope you are too." So, "Boy, there are so many things to say about Ed. I couldn't have asked for a better guy to take over after I left. Throughout his career, he was always so passionate about being a firefighter. His main concern has always been about the people. Whether it's the victims of a fire, patient on a medical run, or his fellow firefighters at the station, Ed always had to be sure they were looked after. He didn't decide what he wanted to be when he grew up until later in life. He was almost 40 when he started at the APFD. That put him in a unique position. He was not only a quote-unquote 'new guy,' but also a mentor to the younger members of the department, even though he had less seniority than them. Ed always takes on new challenges with great enthusiasm, both in his career and in life, from working his way up the ladder at the Allen Park Fire Department to his work with animal rescue. I am sure that enthusiasm will continue as he and his wife Tammy start their next great adventure, taking on the Great Loop on their new boat. I hope some of this helps. I wish I could be there, but I'm already down in Florida for the winter. Sincerely." Thank you. So we'll start with Mr. Marcos again.
Okay. Ed, thank you. I've gotten to know you over the last couple of years. Nothing has been so, it's hard to explain. He's such a great guy to talk to and listen to. And he's so, he is concerned all the time about the city and the people. It's hard to put into words when a guy puts 18 years of his life on the line for the city and thinks nothing about, other than taking care of the residents. And we greatly appreciate all the service you do. And thank you for training the next guy, because we know he'll carry on in your stead. So again, enjoy your retirement. Have a great time. Thank you.
Mr. Lally.
Thank you. Chief Can, I can't begin to, I've known you for a long time. And you always had excellent reviews about you all the time. You did a beautiful job. And you helped Chief Riley, I know just as long as she, as Chief Riley in front of you. You really did a good job for him. I know you'll do a good job. And thank you. And God bless you and your family. And enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
When we interviewed Chief Can the first time around, he said that he would give us one to three years. One year scared me. So we split the difference. He gave us two. And I'm very appreciative of that. And again, very appreciative of the fact that, much like Chief LaFond, involved you in the steps and the process of leading the department, not just as like the Fire Chief, but as a department head, doing the same with Chief O'Reilly, and filling that gap in between and making sure to keep the ship on course and handing it over to Chief O'Reilly. So thank you so much for your years of service and your time as Chief. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you, Chief.
So much to say. Congratulations first and foremost. I just remember back in January when I was going through the heartache of my father passing, you reaching out to me. And then when I was going through the process of cleaning my dad's apartment out, I found this 9/11 firefighter statue. And like, first thing that came to my mind was, I got to give this to someone who is going to maintain the meaning behind it. Went and saw Chief Can, sat in his office, we talked about family, talked about a lot of things. I was happy for that moment, for sure. I don't mean to diss the other firefighters. I pulled that prayer from online. This, I wrote for you, Chief. Lord, for the last 18 years, you have blessed us all with the dedication and service of Fire Chief Ed Can. This humble servant has faced danger and the unknown daily in his role as a firefighter and has nobly guided the Allen Park Fire Department through periods of transition, while fostering many programs that truly benefit the citizens of this city. Lord, just as you are able to grant the gift of life, we thank you for instilling in Chief Ed Can and all of the amazing firefighter paramedics, the knowledge and ability to save lives. We thank you for the opportunity to share and witness Ed Can's immense love for those he has led in his role as Fire Chief, as well as his endearing smile and his amazing sense of humor. Lord, we thank you for all this. And we ask that you watch over and bless Ed Can and his family as he begins this next chapter in his life in retirement. Chief Can, may the sunsets on the water always bring you peace. And may you enjoy each day in retirement as much as we have enjoyed each day spent with you. God bless and congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Schleck.
Chief Can, you've talked a lot in the last couple of years. You definitely gave me a lot of tips and help. And I enjoyed your ability to express things with me with your wit and sarcasm that I definitely have the sense of doing more privately than publicly. So I want to congratulate for your years of service, your knowledge and sincerity that you've brought to the team that you've led and teams you have been on. Will surely be missed, but thank you for your service. And I have a quote that I found. Dare to live the life you have dreamed for yourself. Go forward and make your dreams come true. Waldo Emerson. Or as I like to think, not the quote, but this is the additional part. Or as I like to think, you'll be the same as a retired firefighter. You'll just be a regular firefighter, just happier. So enjoy your retirement. Don't forget us. And have a great retirement. You deserved it. And you're living proof that making your dreams come true after starting your career, after your passion is possible. So, thank you.
Charles.
Oh, Ed. Thank you so much for the 18 years of service. When the mayor was reading the proclamation, there's way more that could be written down. Because I remember seeing in the audience at the old city hall about when delivering that baby boy on Southfield, just fantastic job for all the things you've done. And always having, as I say, staying positive, having that optimistic attitude, even when you come up here and try to present something and teaching us about these equipment things that you present. And it's a bittersweet. It's like, but I know it's going to be a wonderful retirement for you. And just, I always say, it's never goodbyes, it's always see-you-laters. And always God bless. Thank you.
There's not much more to say. You know that we wish you the very best in your retirement. And may it be a very long and happy one. And I think you can rest assured that we will probably miss you more than you're going to miss us. And with that, thank you very much, Ed. Thank you. And now we move on to We'll move on to the administrator's report. Poor guy.
The trick to this is to put items on the agenda that will keep people engaged longer. I learned, it only took me one meeting, Ed went to the podium to speak, that you had to put a limit on how much time you had. Oh. And then, real quick, before you start the other part, as I sit here, I watch Ed and you can see the emotions in there. I think we all sit back and think, oh, this is an easy decision to retire. It's what we all strive for, for the entire career to get to this point. But I've watched this on many, many faces, as I've sat across the table from gentlemen and women over the course of my career. This is not an easy decision. Because I think it's stepping into that unknown. And that's a scary thought for most of us. But I think, Ed, you're darn well ready for this. And I think you'll enjoy your time. And I hope you definitely enjoy your time and your new excursions. For my report, I'm actually going to yield to Amanda. I heard that there was a lot of preference that she does this because she does it a lot quicker. I heard that. I heard that. So I offered this up earlier and there was a yell from the other office of, "Heck no." Just a few updates here. I only got five or six, 10 pages. Rosedale Boulevard reconstruction, that's hard rock concrete. They're wrapping up that project. And they're just working on the punch list items now. The Rosedale ADA ramps, we have a contractor that began saw cutting later this week. They actually did one of the intersections at Belmont already. They'll be installing the ADA ramps where needed on Rosedale Boulevard. Work will continue on this through next week. And Savone Cement is going to be doing this work for us. The previous contractor's management was hard rock, but they are now working on Reef Road. And we don't want to, we want to limit any interruptions so we can get the Reef Road project done. So Savone had a little bit of capacity. So we have them working on this for us now. Talking about Reef Road Water Main Replacement and Reconstruction. Reef Road is still closed between Goddard and Allen Road, except for local traffic. The new water main portion of the project has been completed. They're working on stormwater, stormwater, they're working on storm sewer installation this week. And weather permitting, they're to begin pouring tomorrow from Goddard to Crescent on the east side of the street. So we're hoping the weather will maintain that we can get this poured. And they'll be making some, that's a major portion, I think it's about 500 or 600 yards of concrete. So a big, pretty big pour. Paris Avenue, this was a reconstruction project with Savone. That work is all complete with the exception of the sod installation. Savone is also doing concrete sectioning for us. They're currently working on a large 500-foot section off of Buckingham Court, off of Goddard Road. I think we had a collapse of the road in that area. So they're fixing that right now. I think they've got the, the west side of the street has been poured. They'll be taking out the east side here shortly. They're also going to be, again, the full replacement of Belfour Avenue between E Course Road and Pelham Avenue, along with a 400-foot section of Buckingham Avenue between E Course and Pelham, between E Course and Philamine. Those are back-to-back streets, the E Course-Pelham area. Once those areas are complete, they'll be moving on to the utility repairs throughout the city and also still doing some small section areas at the same time. Once they're finished with those, that'll be the end of their construction season until 2024. The joint ceiling program, that contractor was Ailes Asphalt. They completed joint ceiling all of E Course Road. It was done from Pelham to Roosevelt. They also completed the area west of Allen Road and just north of Southfield Road here from Allen to Arnold, from Beatrice to Hanford. So about Southfield here to inner-city Baptist, it'll be on the railroad track side of Allen Road. So that was all joint sealed as well. Asphalt paving of the three DDA alleys was completed. They were the North Allen Road between, the alley between Ann and Warwick, Ann and Warwick. Also North Allen, between Hanover and Ann. Also South Allen Road, Aster to Inglewood. I went down the, I looked at the one there, South Allen Road, it definitely made a big difference behind the businesses there. Wanted just to congratulate Michael Loughlin. He's the Water Department Supervisor. He completed his third year of the Michigan Public Services Institute Training Program last week. So a great endeavor on that project. It's a worthwhile project. I've been able to go for Director's Day and to see what they do is very worthwhile. I know Tom has gone through that program, Bill Minor, and I think you have a number of others that are also in the process of going through that steps as well. Fire Department is planning the 2023 Open House for Sunday, October 8, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. We have a shred day scheduled for Saturday, October 28. The event will be held, the parking lot off of Philamine, behind Prestige Banquet Hall, Culvers PNC. The time for that is going to be 9 to 12. It's the same location we used last year. It seemed to work pretty well. And again, the hours will be 9 to 12 for that. It's a little bit different from previous years, I think, by less than hour in time. No need to line up. If you're at shred, don't need to line up. We'll get you through it throughout the day. It slows down. It's busy at the 9 o'clock hour to about 9:15, 9:30. Just come on up there. It's not going to be waiting for hours or anything like that. We have the Lady Christmas Parade on Park Avenue that'll be held on Friday, November 17, starting at 6:30. And we have an open house celebrating the community center's 20th anniversary. That'll take place on November 29. There'll be a brief ceremony prior to the Allen Park Fire City Jaguars hockey game versus Birmingham Unified. And just a real quick shout out to Michael Shook, Fire Department, 20 years on October 6 with the city of Allen Park. So we congratulate him as well. Thank you for that, for your years of service. If you can get that message back as well, we really appreciate that.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We're now open for public comments. Anyone wishing to come up and speak may do so. You have four minutes. All we ask is that you give your name and the street on which you live. Please do not give us your full address.
Hello, Mayor Council. Just want to say a few things tonight. Congrat-
Congratulations to the DDA on the Maiden Michigan Festival. Those who volunteered and put the work in for that festival did a great job. It was a very well attended event. I was there both days and took it all, and it was really great. Thank you. Congratulations also to the coaching staff and football players of the Allen Park Middle School. It's the Panthers, it's my son's football team, as well as Mr. Mizzi's son's football team. They're two and oh right now, and as of tomorrow, hopefully they'll be three and oh. Be an away game, so wish us luck on that. Also, all levels really of Jags football and sports. Everybody's doing fantastic. And specifically, I'm looking forward to the homecoming game this weekend on Friday. That's going to be an amazing game as they take on wind up. And lastly, I just want to congratulate also Chief O'Reilly and then Chief Ken on your retirement. Thank you for your years of service. Appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I didn't say it. Tim Astheimer, Melbourne Avenue. I think I missed it.
Mayor Council, thank you. My name's Edwardsbacher, Meyer Avenue. I'm here on three things today. First one, this coming Saturday, the Beautification Commission. We're going to be having our cleanup of the Downtown Development Authority Zone. We're going to be meeting at the Community Center Parking Lot at ten a.m. And the cleanup is only, we're only out there for two hours, from ten a.m. to twelve. The DDA, they're going to be providing food and soft drinks to the volunteers afterwards. So come on out. Okay, that's my commission hat. I'm taking that off. Now I'm here as a resident volunteer. I worked Friday and Saturday, volunteered for the Maiden Michigan. And I want to tell you what, I volunteered for a lot of events in the city. We had a blast. I want to thank the employees, different employees from the city hall that came out and volunteered for the event. Deb, Kristen, Barb, Tanya, and her daughter Maddie. I'd like to thank the mayor, council members Marcos, Blevins. Blevins gets MVP, Most Valuable Pourer. This guy knows how to pour beer. And Councilman Schleck. Schleck, you obviously studied while you were at Michigan State. I would also like to thank Dennis, Dennis Marcos' wife, Renee, for volunteering, along with my fellow commissioners, Kathy Collier. And the Friday Vendor Guidance Team that we were guiding the vendors to their locations. That would be Tanya and a gentleman by the name of Kerry. I didn't get his last name. I'd like to make sure that I thank the DPS, the Parks and Rec, Fire Department, Police Department. Everybody did an excellent job on putting this thing together. It ran smooth. I got to tell you, it really did. I wouldn't say it otherwise. Special note for one of the Parks and Rec employees, his name's Evan. There was a situation, the bands were starting to set up the sound equipment, and the mobile stage just kept on blowing breakers. We couldn't figure it out. We were trying different chords, but through Evan's diligence, we got, he got everything up and running before the show started. So that went flawlessly. I'm also, now I'm talking for the Allen Park Citizens Civic Fund. With proceeds from our, this year's Pizza Beer and Wine Event, we were able to order, these are called File of Life folders. They're magnetic, they go on a refrigerator. Here's an information card that would have the person's medical information. So if the Fire Department, Fire Rescue has to respond, this information is readily available. Also proceeds from the Pizza Beer and Wine to the Parks and Rec, and would like to thank them for their speedy expeditingness. The doggy waste stations that are installed in most of the parks now. People walking their dogs no more. Hopefully, they're going to use these stations to have the bags, the gloves, everything to pick it up, bags to throw it in, so the dog waste is properly disposed of. And I think my four minutes is up, but congratulations, Chief, and congratulations to retiring Chief Ken. That's it? Thank you. Go Allen Park!
Good evening, Mark Bailey, Philamine and Park Avenue. I want to thank everybody in the city for everything that you've done over the thirty-five years that the Elks have had our pumpkin patch. And it's again happening on Halloween where we'll have a full house of special needs individuals entertained, and we'll have entertainment on Saturday night. And Angels Night or Devils Night, whatever you prefer to call it, the Raiders are invading Ford's Field. And I'll give you more information. Now I have to go care for my mother, who's ninety-one and counting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Fellow department heads, it's only one page and it's really, really big print. I just, I wrote something down in case the opportunity came to speak, and I didn't even think of this section. And there's some people that really need to be thanked, that I want to thank. First of all, thank you all for the very kind words. I know they're sincere, and I felt that. And it's been a long and sometimes bumpy road. Lots of people got me to this point, my parents and friends, but most importantly, my wife, And I wouldn't be a firefighter without her. Early in our relationship, I'd whine and whine that I always wanted to be a firefighter, and I didn't get the opportunity and didn't make the opportunity. She said, quit whining. Either stop whining, or you go for it, and I stand behind you. And she stood behind me. And she quizzed me, and she helped me through classes. And when I was thirty-seven, going through the academy, there were bills that had to be paid, and she paid them. So at thirty-seven, I joined the academy and Northville City firefighter. I became a volunteer firefighter there with Richard Hamilton, by the way. He worked there as well. And thanks to the late, great Chief Allen, who gave me my first start there. At age thirty-eight, I became a paramedic, and at forty, I became a rookie firefighter, probationary firefighter at Allen Park. Tammy supported me right along, and she was woken up many times in the middle of the night. If it wasn't the volunteer pager, then it was the telephone I carry now for fires and emergencies at three in the morning. And she spent many times alone when I was a twenty-four hour firefighter, in holidays and special occasions. So, honey, I love you. I applied to twenty-two departments, and Allen Park picked me up. After a year and a half of waiting after that interview, I sat in gymnasiums full of people, trying to just get a score high enough to get in front of a chief for an interview. Things are much different now, and staffing challenges face many departments. The people who have helped me make it through my shifts and then made me look good as a chief officer are my fellow firefighters. Without them, I'd be nothing. They are strong and brave and trustworthy and fun, fun being a big part of it. They have a sense of community and charity, and they're being called on to do some very, very difficult and dangerous tasks, and more often, I might add. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Chief LaFond, who mentored me as a deputy chief and showed me how to lead the department. Last but not least, a special thank you to Deputy Chief, now Chief, O'Reilly, for the last two and a quarter years, by the way, two and a quarter years. He has supported me and made me successful. His organizational skills put mine to shame. I've been cleaning my office for like a month now, trying to get everything cleaned up. And his work ethic and hustle have gotten a lot of great things done for the department and the community. So congratulations to him and his family, and also to our new upcoming deputy chief, Eric Taylor. I also want to thank the city of Allen Park for giving me this opportunity to serve you, and to this mayor and council for always supporting the Fire Department, and I know that you always will. Thank you.
I assume there are no further public comments, so I will close this section. And we will move on to the consent agenda, which tonight consists of claims and accounts in the payroll report. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Resolution one, to approve the employment agreement with Fire Chief Jeffrey O'Reilly. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius. Second by Mr. Lally. I heard. Comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Resolution two, to appoint Eric Taylor. We are at a concert here. You rock. Resolution to appoint Eric Taylor to the position of deputy fire chief contingent upon reaching mutual agreement on a deputy fire chief employment agreement. Motion, please.
Motion.
Wait a minute.
Everyone.
Everyone. I had Mr. Lloyd on the left, and I had Mr. Marcos on the right. Any comments or questions?
Mayor, just to the chair, I had the privilege of interviewing Sergeant Taylor. Very impressive in his interview, and also very important to note, was spoken very highly of by his commanding officers and the people that he works with. So I have no doubt that he will very confidently step into the shoes of Chief O'Reilly.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution has passed. Resolution three is to approve the outdoor event application received from Milad Ashaka for a promotional event to be held on Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at sixty-six sixty Allen Road, with the request to use the city property and the rear city barricades and city personnel with reimbursement as stated by applicant, pending final approval from the police chief. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius. Second by Mr. Lally. Comments and questions? I think this needs to be explained.
Nobody else is standing up, I guess. This will be an event being held on Wednesday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Kendall Jenner will be coming in to, for a meet and greet at the Top Shelf Liquor Store here on Allen Road.
He is not joking.
So I said earlier, it's going to be all young ladies there. Apparently not.
It was twenty-one and above also.
Twenty-one and above is, I think, the top.
Yeah.
And this is a continuation of some other events that Top Shelf has had in the past with Robert Irving, Charles Woodson, E-40, probably missing, I think, one more in there that we didn't get. So we've worked with the owner to try to get as much advanced notice as possible on these events, just so we can be prepared with police staffing, with fire staffing, any city staff that needs to be, and to help with the program itself, and also to let notify our neighboring communities so they're aware of the event, just in case there is a mutual aid need. In that part, we are in great hands because Chief Egan is part of that process with the command options that they have available to us.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We come to council comments, where we will start with Mr. Marcos.
You know, I get to do this, go first once every six meetings. And so normally, it's a repetition of what everybody's saying. So tonight, I get repeti, I have to go behind all the citizens who are already talking about things I wanted to talk about, so. But I'm going to repeat them anyway. The Maiden Michigan Festival was outstanding. It was a lot of fun. It was, I felt Ben running around all over the place trying to get things done, and just everything came off really well. All the people from the office that came out and worked, they don't have to do that. Some of them don't live in the city even. They're out there volunteering and working. Really greatly appreciate that. It's so good to see that. And all the volunteers that come out and work. This shows a lot about how people want to get involved in the city and do things and help, and it's very important. Ed, you stole all my thunder again. I was going to mention the city cleanup. It is, again, next Saturday from ten to twelve, meeting at the community center. We need volunteers. We want volunteers. We get people from all over. I know our executive assistant comes out and helps, again, the girls in the office, people from all over. And I can't stress enough how much we need help from the city and the residents. We love having you come out. We love having you getting involved in the city. Thank you. But again, ones who come out, again, thank you. We need more. We can use all the help we can get cleaning up the city. So there's always something to do out there, and it's only for two hours, and you get fed. So come on out. I remind everybody, on October eleventh, at seven o'clock at Allen Park High School at the Performing Arts Center, there will be the Meet the Candidates Night for everybody. Again, we'd like to see a full house there. You see all the candidates for city council, for mayor, for treasurer, for city clerk, and he's going to have the toughest race. I know he's, he's always got a lot of people up against him, but he always beats them. But it's going to be a lot of fun and be informative. We would like everybody to come. If you don't come, at least watch it on, it's going to be on the city channels, I believe. So please try to come, at least watch. What else I got? Well, we talked about Chief Ken, Chief O'Reilly, and now new deputy chief, Eric Taylor. Thank you all. Continue, thank yous. It's, you know, these are tough jobs, and not everybody's cut out for it, and you guys are doing the right thing for the city, and we greatly, greatly appreciate it. So thank you. One thing I did want to mention, we talked about claims and accounts on here, and normally we ask questions about what's going where, what's going there. And I remember when I first started here a couple of years ago, I kept looking at the accounts, and I keep seeing all these parts for, that each department is buying for their vehicles. I wondered, I had a lot of parts, who's fixing these things? Well, because again, I'm new, I didn't know. Our DPS have mechanics, they have their own in-service repair shop. They do everything inside. Saves the city a ton of money. These guys are on the payroll, they're all ready here. We don't have to go into a dealership and pay incredibly, you know, hundred fifty dollar an hour labor charges. We're doing all the repairs in-house. I think a lot of people don't realize that, because I didn't. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of it, that the city is saving a lot of money by doing all their own repairs in-house. The last thing I was going to mention, I usually give my useless fact of the day, but this isn't a useless fact. This is, I look at, you know, I see, it's called National Family Day. For me, I sitting here listening, I got a city clerk who grew up with the fire chief, whose wife teaches his son and kids, and everybody here knows somebody and has grown, grown up with somebody, or is related to somebody, and if this city isn't a big family, then you're wrong. It is. Again, I want to thank all the citizens who come out and volunteer, and please, we can use more. And that's all I have to say. Thank you all, appreciate it very much, and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Lally?
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to congratulate Ed Ken for retiring. You did a beautiful job, like I said before, and I'm sure that Chief O'Reilly will do the same, and Eric Taylor will probably proceed from there. I want to thank you again so much for being, for did all the good work that you did at Allen Park. Thank you. I want to thank the students from, prior to Michigan May, students from Inter-City Baptist Church went over there and started... Students from InterCity Bethurst went over there and started cleaning up downtown. They did a beautiful job. Come to find out that they do it almost every year. I didn't see them before, but they do it every year, clean up the streets, you know, prior to Michigan. Maiden Michigan. I just want to say Maiden Michigan was great. I came over there and enjoyed myself, me and my wife and my little granddaughter. I want to thank Mario Savona for doing an excellent job over at the Blue Star Memorial. The cement looks beautiful. I'm sure he's gonna do a good job at the Brand Park Memorial, Vietnam Memorial, and beyond. Just a wonderful job he does. All around Allen Park, he does a good job. I want to say, Go Jags, they beat the Atso Ford on their own turf, and they're having homecoming this weekend, Friday. Make sure you make it. And I want to say thank you very much for having me up here, and thank you all for coming tonight. God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
You know, it's pretty funny. I had a student, they're starting to come for their classes to-- we're government required, not my class, but they asked like how long they usually run. I said, man, if you definitely come tonight, it's gonna be a short meeting. I always forget about the presentations. I always forget about the presentations, so, sorry, Chloe. We're almost done, almost done. All right. I, this is, I think that these are, these are the meetings that are here up on council that we live for. Is we have all sorts of celebrations, seeing people go, put new people into new jobs. And it, I think, to Councilman Marcos's point, it really illustrates that this town really is a big family. If you were to just go around this room, you know, my dad taught Mr. Mizzy, and I coached Jack there, and had Kate in my class, and, you know, Carrie is best friends with my sister-in-law. Like, you know, it's, there is a million connections going everywhere in the city, and it is one of the things that makes this such a great place to live. And to Mr. Wurtzbacher, I wrote it down so I would say it right. I think he, like, even though a newcomer to the city came in and just completely immersed himself, and as you can see standing up here, you know, part of the beautification committee, part of APCCF. Thank you so much, okay? I had the privilege of volunteering with him at the street fair. Every chance that he gets, he's volunteering his time and energy and talents into the things that he does. And it's, it's one of the things that makes this an amazing place to live, and why people ultimately come back and choose to make this a place that they want to raise their families. So to everybody in this room, thank you so much for making this an amazing place to live. I really appreciate it. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius.
I'll try and keep it short. Thank you, Chief Can, Chief O'Reilly, Deputy Chief Taylor, all the firefighters and first responders and police officers in the city. Also, shout out to all our department heads. Thank you, Mr. Murray, for the correspondence we had regarding some residents that I had talked to that the issue was immediately resolved over a weekend. And also, the DPS workers woke up Sunday with very low water pressure, instantly went on, you know, the best source of information you could get, Facebook, to find out exactly what was happening, you know? And I heard everyone just saying, you know, what the heck is going on? Even though city workers were out there at 7:00 AM already working on the problem at Quentin O'Connor. And within a couple hours, full water pressure was back up and everything was fine. So again, thanks for everyone for that, and everything that you do on a daily basis as well. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, once again, I'm gonna thank you for the final time, Ed, at least in uniform. Thank you for your service, and enjoy retirement. Chief O'Reilly, I look forward to your tenure, and I definitely look forward to getting to know Eric, sorry, blanked out there. I look forward to getting to know you, and I'm sure that'll be a good conversation. I want to say best of luck to the Jags this weekend and the Panthers. I guess they're both on full teams. I know the Jags were, I'm unaware of the Panthers, but it sounds like both teams are full speed ahead. I hope our Cardinals in Northern Allen Park, Melvadale, are doing just as well. To be honest, I don't know their record at this time, but I want to have happy homecoming to everyone. Ed, I wanted to say thank you for bringing up the beautification and everything that's going on. Definitely wanted a big shout out to the DDA and the Maiden Michigan. I had a lot of fun. I served beer. Despite what Ed might said, I think I did all right managing the money at least, because without that, I don't think we could have done as good of a job. But nonetheless, thank you for everyone that did, that came out. Thank you all to the vendors that came to our city. I think it was not, didn't have many as we had in the past, but I think those that came had a great time. And when I was up there, fortunate to talk to a lot of residents about issues that came up, and showing me all the fascinating things they bought, and they were really happy they came. So if you haven't, didn't go make it this year, definitely come out next year. I'm sure it's gonna be bigger and better. And with that, definitely come out for the beautification event. Important event, one cigarette butt at a time, and to every end, there's a new beginning. So, and with that, I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blevins.
Well, it must be autumn, because the flowers are blooming of yard signs everywhere, just saying. But because of autumn, please make sure you're driving carefully, because it gets darker early, and then in the morning when the schools, it's still dark out, so please be careful while driving, both in the morning and at night. And if you're walking, make sure you're wearing bright colors. Maiden Michigan, Friday, I was with my boyfriend Eddie, and we-- first time ever going to the Maiden Michigan Festival, and he's from Harper Woods, and he's like, man, this fantastic event, you know? So it's just like, I've heard so many other, not even people from the city, but other towns coming and celebrating. Saturday was fun. I volunteered with the beer tent area, and yes, I taught people how to pour beer and all this stuff, but it was fantastic, fantastic. Thank you to everyone that came out and helped and volunteered. And next year, if you're not doing anything, please come and volunteer. Like Mr. Marcos said, we need more volunteers for everything. To Ben, fantastic job. I know, I believe he said this was his first time running it, and again, Ben, great job. So running around, and again, trying to make sure that it ran smoothly with all the other departments, and great job, Ben. Because with that, also support local businesses. There was many people that came and was like, well, where's, like, Moro's, or where's Major Tomato? And it's, oh, right there. And also, so it's just, again, keep supporting local businesses so they can stay in Allen Park for years to come. Also, keep supporting the farmer's market. We still have that for another month, every Friday, 3:00 to 7:00 on Park Avenue. And congrats to the Jags. Keep up the good work. Again, great job to Detroit Lions, winning again, so, here we go, Super Bowl. Mark my words. With the homecoming, please make sure, come out on champagne, 4:00 PM is when it starts, the parade. Support your students, especially when they do their homecoming floats and passing out the candy. So again, make sure you're supporting the students out there. And lastly, great job to all the residents so far with the fall and Halloween decorations, making the city look beautiful with the decorations all around the city. And everyone, just keep up the good work as always. And thank you always, and stay positive, and God bless, and I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Mizzy.
I just ate a piece of candy this year.
You want, you want Charles to continue a little longer for you?
More scoring seven years ago. I'm gonna be a little long-winded today. I know, I know. I'm just feeling it. Don't forget Allen Park Homecoming this Friday. I'm gonna repeat what Councilman Blevins said. Congratulations to Deputy Fire Chief Eric Taylor, new Fire Chief Jeff O'Reilly, and congratulations to Ed. I'm not gonna say much. I think I said enough to you the first time I called you. Brought you here. You know what I said anyways. Thank you, Ed. Congratulations. I also want to bring up on Thursday, I got to go up to Lansing as a guest of State Senator Camilleri. And I am more than proud to announce that on September 21st, 2023, the Michigan State Senate recognized that day as Maltese American Heritage Day. Now, most people don't even know where the country Malta is, or what Malta is. And there's not many of us. It's a long resolution, but I'll sum it up in a few things. Whereas Malta is a country in the central Mediterranean Sea with a rich and unique history dating back thousands of years. And then, it's the fourth most densely populated country in Europe. We have 450,000 people that live there and approximately 121 square miles. The United States here is home to one of the largest populations. There's over 38,000. Michigan has 12,900. Allen Park has hundreds. For example, my son's football team, I know of at least four of them, including my son, that are Maltese. So I'm just gonna end it there, but I'd just like to thank State Senator Camilleri and State Senator Geis who sponsored it. So, thank you. Now, I'm gonna bring up the election. I haven't said much. I want to remind everybody, November 7th is a local city race, okay? One thing I've seen over the years in every branch of government, the number one place where you could complain and actually get a result that you're most of the time happy with, is in your local government. So I just want to urge people to vote on November 7th. There's plenty of time to get an absentee ballot. However, if you're going to vote that day, we're gonna consolidate all the precincts over to the community center. So everybody's gonna go there just for this election this year. There's a lot going on in 2024, but I gotta get rid of 2023 first. Lot of new laws coming, but we're gonna deal with this one. This is a very exciting election. We do have two running for mayor, only one running for treasurer, one running for clerk. We have six filed for council, and it is elect six. However, we do have our very first registered write-in in the local race. So no, the city can in no way give the name out. And when you, if you go vote on Election Day, none of the precinct workers by law can give you the write-in person's name. You're gonna have to call the clerk's office or just check your mail for campaign literature. With that, absentee ballots are going out shortly. I know we have people who like to fill them out and send them back right away, but in no way am I promoting campaigning. However, I want to remind people that the schools are, the schools are hosting a Meet the Candidate Night on October 11th at 7:00 PM. And I bring that up because one of the most frustrating things people with us is we can't give them any information on the candidates. And it's one of the number one things they ask for. No, I already got my ballot. I'm set there. I need to know. I don't know any of these people. So anyone who doesn't have access to the internet or doesn't get campaign literature at Allen Park High School, the students are hosting a Meet the Candidate October 11th at 7:00 PM.
Yeah, Joe.
Registering to vote, it's-- Yeah, here at City Hall. I'll be putting in ads. I don't really answer that question, because you could come in on Election Day, register to vote in the clerk's office, and vote absentee. So, and then I guess you could kind of say it's 15 days before the election. Well, and there's just so many ways. You want to vote, I'll get you to vote, and I don't mean that shady either. We're there with technology. I know people think, oh my gosh, they could come in and register to vote and vote on the same day. They have to come into the clerk's office and do it, and when they do, it simultaneously communicates with Lansing. So wherever that person was registered to vote at, it'll, it will ping that. And it'll either lock them out from voting, or alert that there's a problem, so. Register as early as you can. Clerk's office, through, I always push, and it's the website I always push, Michigan SOS or MichiganMI.Vote, MI.gov/vote. There's just so many ways. Don't-- And I've seriously been deterring people from doing it at voter registration drives. And people think I'm anti-voter registration. No, I'm anti-giving your information and signature to someone you don't know and I don't know. So always do it through the state of Michigan, or your local clerk's office, Secretary of State. However, Joe, I also don't push it, because another new law that happened is for millennia, ever since we've been able to register to vote, you used to have to ask to register to vote. You were supposed to. If you went to go get your license, they wouldn't, they couldn't by law automatically register you to vote. Now, it's reversed. Now, when you go in for an ID or your driver's license, you may not know it, and you may not want to be, but you are a registered voter. So it's just like, finding me someone who's not is like a unicorn nowadays. God bless him. And that's a great thing. That's a great thing. But if you come into me Election Day and say I'm not registered to vote, I'll say, come, follow me. Let's go to the clerk's office. So, sorry I made that a seven-minute answer, but there's a lot to it. Just wait till 2024. I'm really gonna confuse you.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank y'all for coming out. God bless you.
Thank you. Do appreciate all that very useful information. I will try and be brief, just touch briefly on Maiden Michigan. Think it was a great event. Got a lot of feedback from people who were either new to the community or had been in Allen Park many years ago, who had moved out, passing by saying, boy, this is really cute. This is really neat. I haven't been here in a while. It's really looking good. And as a city official, it makes you feel very good about that. And as someone who lives here, it makes you feel even better. It's a little inside joke about pouring beer. We had a problem with the Michelob Ultra, not with the rest of them. But Charles helped us out on that one. Some people are just better at pouring a beer than others. I've got a pretty good touch on that, so see me next time. It got a little hectic on occasion, but I think when you've got people just kind of working together, it gets to be a lot of fun, because it's kind of like, well, Friday night was kind of like being at war, but anyway. We all survived. Styrofoam, I, we had a styrofoam recycling a couple of Saturdays ago. While we didn't fill the semi-truck, I think it was pretty successful. Word got out and about. I guess one of the radio stations broadcast it. And much to our amazement, we had people coming from all over, and I mean all over. We had one couple that drove down from Sterling Heights, and I thought, boy, that's a lot. Until we got a couple who drove down from Holly to give us their styrofoam. So people who were aware of it were very enthused, had a gentleman bring two full SUVs, first from Gibraltar, where he gathered-- first from Gibraltar, where he gathered, filled his vehicle from his in-laws, and then said, I'll see you in an hour, because he lived out in Plymouth and was going out there to get his, came back with his full boatload. So we're hoping that we continue that, maybe not ask you to store it for a year, but maybe gather it from you a couple times a year. People just don't want to put that stuff into, into the landfills. Even had a woman come in here a few days ago, wondering if we were still taking it, because she just got a new TV, but she told me that she'd hang on to it until next year, and I'm holding her to her word. I'm probably going to miss something. Homecoming is this Friday, and then the Cabrini Homecoming, I believe, is October 13th. Hoping everybody has good weather and good winds. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Lally.
Through the chair. If I could, just one additional thing.
Surely.
I'd like to thank the gentleman from Top Shelf. I mean, they've been here for our work session, as well as the entire meeting. Thank you for the event you're putting on to promote not only small business in Allen Park, but the city itself.
Thank you. And I had a second from Mr. Valerius?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned at 7:11.